We did that.
So, good evening and welcome, everybody, to the City of Lake Forest Park City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, February 27, 2025. And we're going to start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll lead everyone.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Do I hear a motion for adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Y'all work it out. It's been moved and seconded. All right. Is there any further discussion? It's adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. With that, we're moving on to public comments, and thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. A little blurb that we have to read here is the council will not be accepting online public comments. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor or presiding officer may request the speaker to suspend their comments. Council may direct staff to follow up on auto items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. Thank you, chief. Do we have anybody signed up? Perfect. So, okay. Let's start with Mr. Hamilton. Would you like to join us at the at the dais, please? Welcome, Eric.
Hello. How are you? Good. So, hi, I'm Eric Hamilton. I'm a longtime resident of Lake Forest Park. I've lived here my entire life. I send the true Bay 50 down the street. So I'm just here to talk a little bit about some concerns I have with various projects throughout the city. So I am looked at a lot of the projects that the city is looking at doing in the future. In particular, I have looked at the comprehensive plan, a lot of the sort of safe streets initiatives that the city is looking at doing. And I know that there's a lot of concerns right now, I think, budgetary around these sorts of projects. So a bit of context, I'm a bike commuter. I bike to work on 55th Avenue. I also see a lot of other people bike on 55th Avenue. I feel it's a tremendously unsafe street. I feel, you know, in danger quite often when I'm on that street. And so I guess my my stressing here is that there's a lot of safety improvements that I would like to see in the future in Lake Forest Park. This is a community I love. This is a community I cherish. And so feeling safe in this community to just go to work, you know, would be something I would love to see. And it's a bit. It's this thing where, when I look at neighboring communities, I look at Kenmore, I look at Bothell. I see a lot of improvements in those communities that have been tremendous. And I'm not seeing that as much here, and I suppose I find that a little frustrating. Another topic is the Stride BRT line that is coming through here. I'm a little concerned about how it seems that Lake Forest Park is moving in a direction that might be moving to delay that project. I think that project's really critical to the needs of our community and to the needs of the people. So like one of my coworkers, a couple, quite a few of them are commuters via transit. They use a 522 bus route that would receive tremendous improvements as part of the Stride BRT projects that would run for our community. I work at St. Edward State Park for reference there. So I don't really want to see that project delayed anymore than it has been. So I know that that's not necessarily the council's prerogative on that matter, because that's more localized groups. But I think that I guess my general ask is that the council considers a lot of these broader needs of our community beyond just typical commentators that usually come to these sorts of things and usually have their voices sometimes outspokenly heard on a lot of these issues. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate your comments. We all do. Let's see, we have no one else signed up, but certainly would open the floor if anyone else has not had the opportunity to sign up to make public comment at this time. Okay. Only once, there are no public comments. We'll close public comments. And with that, we are moving on to a lot of highlights of the evening tonight. We're going to be talking about, first of all, proclamation and then moving on to presentations. I've asked Vice Chair, excuse me, Bodie to read the proclamation recognizing March 2025 as Women's History Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economics, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and the study of American history. Now, therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Lake Forest Park do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Women's History Month in the city of Lake Forest Park and urge all citizens to join in the special observance. Sign this 27th day of February 2025. Mayor Tom French.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate that very much, and I sincerely hope progress will continue on all those fronts. And we're moving on to presentations now. 2025 annual work plans for boards and commissions. We're going to start with Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Tyler Ditman, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, happy to be here and give you an update on a little bit of what we've been doing for the last year and what we plan to do in the future. As you know, the Parks Board meets monthly and currently has five members. I'm the Chair. Amy Hannigan is the Vice Chair with Richie Allen, Josh Rosenau, and Steve Feth. We have two vacancies. We're supposed to have seven. So we have a, we're open to applications. It's in the e-news. It's on the website. So send folks our way. We also have Mayor Bodie join us at our meetings as our council liaison and Corey Mattson as our staff liaison. The 2025 work plan was attached to your agenda, so you can take a look there. We have five areas of focus again with our focus on parks. We are, of course, excited with our ongoing work for the Lakefront Park property. The past year, we've been very, very engaged with the consultants to coordinate community input and to provide initial design ideas. That was actually super fun. So I've had a really good time with that. As the work enters the next phase, we are ready and able to continue that work to on with community outreach and in putting further design details. In particular, we have a, I think there's a workshop planned for late spring, early summer that we can we can participate in and and host the community in that. The second work plan item is about providing relevant and updated information to our residents about our parks and using occasional park spotlight sections in our e-news and our social media. Everybody on the board knows our parks well and loves to talk about them. We're happy to share that passion with the community. The third part is about expanding recreation opportunities. We love that stuff, too. So that gets a lot of a lot of excitement, particularly the pickleball, it turns out. In prior years, we've had a really well-received yoga in the parks activity in the summer. We were unable to do that in 2024, but we are very excited to do it in 2025. This past year, we also started a yard sale, sort of coordination thing, I call it, in September, and we're hoping to do that again. Maybe even expand it to be a little more connected and promoted consistently. Or as always, we're working on identifying, mapping, and organizing walking routes, events, and coordinating with other sponsors to use our parks and public spaces. As and pickleball, of course, you might have heard, continues to be a very popular activity. And the pickleball courts at Horizon View are really well-used. We're we help maintain those courts, keep keep the interest on them. There are many pickleball players in the city, and we've we've had to kind of help help them find other places to play, including at the LFP Elementary, which is not a city park property, but is available and nearby, and the pickleballers love it. And we're going to, we look forward to doing more of that in the next year. The fourth item is more community events to promote our parks and recreation opportunities. This definitely overlaps with the first goal, right, for the community outreach with respect to the Lakefront Park. So that's a that's a big way we do that. We also coordinate with other local groups like Shore Lake Arts, the City of Shoreline, Third Place Commons, and the Stewardship Foundation, all very good partners in that. The final work plan item is to connect with the the council and other boards within the city to coordinate. You'll see in some of the presentations later tonight, I think there are a few areas that we can of definite overlap with the Tree Board and the Climate Action Committee in particular. There are some cool opportunities there. So that was a brief summary. Tried to keep it short. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Tyler. Colleagues, questions? Vice Chair for Tony, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Ditman, for amazing work that your committee is doing and a great summary of the work plan coming up. I'm really looking forward to it. Isn't there something amazing happening in April in Horizon View?
I don't know, maybe.
Was it that the was it you folks who were doing the unveiling?
Okay, we'll.
I'll hold off my.
I'm very eager.
I bet. I should have asked you ahead of time. Sorry about that. Colleagues, other questions for Tyler? Because we're riddle.
Not so much a question, but thank you for all the effort and work that you put into bringing back, giving back to your community. And I think it really goes to show this committee and all the other committees and boards, how important it is for our community members to be part of this civic process. So first of all, thank you and the members of your board, and thank you for a very succinct and well-described work plan.
Colleagues, questions for Tyler?
One, I'll add real quick, Councilmember for Tony, I think there there might be something about a sculpture that might be coming up. So is that, we'll get to that later, but there is a, we are involved with that a little bit as well.
Did you?
Yes, I just wanted to say, from my experience, how great it is to interact with the park board members, and I hope we can get you two new members as quickly as possible. And I, we were talking today about trying to do a little specialized outreach on that and try to get some people because the current membership we have is great, but it would be good to have a couple more people because there is a lot going on. I really appreciate your engagement with the community and looking for opportunities to enhance recreation. And so I I just want to say thank you all, and please don't let anyone else retire from the board. And thank you especially because you have been the Chair and a member of the board for quite some time. So I really appreciate your your doing that and sticking around.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Lori. Appreciate that. Colleagues, any other questions for Tyler? Well, I'd like to send my thanks as well to the Parks Board. You guys are doing a fantastic job. My daughter and I, during the recent snow event, were up at Horizon View sledding two different days. The first day was thinly visited by the by small humans, but the second day was like 50 kids down that little tiny hill. And I have a great panorama of the field the second day, which is great. And we need to celebrate a lot of these amenities that we're that we're blessed with having. So thank you again for all you guys do.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you have to approve their work plan?
Do we maybe want to disapprove them all? Oh.
You bet. And moving on to the Tree Board. Welcome, Mr. Phillips.
Well, hello, Council, and hello, Mayor, and I'm glad to be here to have the chance to pass on some information about the Tree Board. These days, a little bit of background information, you know that the Tree Board has seven positions, and right now, one of them is vacant. We had two members who resigned during the last year and one new member who came on, but we are down one. And especially kind of looking ahead, I know that in 2026, there will be three Tree Board members whose whose terms will 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 stop at that point with next year. But it's not likely at all, three of them are going to leave the Tree Board. But just to say that membership, as was mentioned with the Parks Commission, is always an issue with the Tree Board. And, you know, we've been very fortunate over the years to have really high-level forestry expertise on the Tree Board. Several, gosh, at one time, I think we had, there were four, at least three or four university-level forestry professors on the Tree Board, and there are two now. And we want to be sure that we keep in mind the need for that. That kind of expertise is really is really valuable. And we meet people who might be interested in serving in that capacity. And we're really grateful, too, for Councilmember Goldman's continuous attendance and meetings with us. He's a lot of information that's helpful. And Elizabeth Talavera, our administrative liaison, and Drew Epping, the city arborist, who is just invaluable in terms of the information that she brings to to our Tree Board meetings. So just a few notes on things that happened last year. You know, the year before that, the end of the year before that, we had the tree inventory and the ecosystem service and values report. So just the point is that one of our members, the Chair at that time, Doug Spruill came and spoke to you about our reflections on that that information, and he was also able to correct a small data entry error that he saw in the data that consultants took it back and reworked it a bit. So that was helpful. One of the things we've been working on is the general tree list for the city. You know, that's not a part of the code, but it is referred to in the code, and the city maintains that list. So we've been spending time kind of going over it, kind of making adding consistency to it, being sure the scientific names are up to date and some other things for that. One thing, just kind of following the same outline of the current current general tree list, which is deciduous and evergreen, and for the deciduous, it it has three or four levels, I think, of height. And but the one new category that we're going to be proposing to you at some point soon, we hope, will be another additional category, which is what not to plant, which has not been a part of that list in the past. And so we've been working on that. Those would be plants, the the Tree List in general is is trees that are automatically approved for replanting. And so they do not, they do not plant trees, would be trees that would be, in our minds, should be automatically not approved for planting. Many of them are on the King County Noxious Weed List, and others are have illness or disease issues and drought problems. So anyway, that's coming down the pipe at some point to you, we hope. And then this in this kind of similar vein, we've been spending time talking about one aspect of the tree code, which is exceptional trees, the larger trees in the city that have additional levels of protections on them. So we've been working on, and and part of the information that we're working with comes out of the the iTree report that was done in the past. But we're going to be suggesting some lowering of those numbers, incrementally lowering some of the some of the the size requirements to be counted as an exceptional tree and therefore have those extra protections. So that's another thing that's coming in the pipe. We also were able to help with Mr. Hoffman's help in a lot of cases, the contribute to the comprehensive plan, tree-related information from the comp for the comp plan. Quickly, there was a number of outreach activities, as there always are in Lake Forest Park. You know, the Green Fair, the Garden, Secret Garden Tour, and Plant Sale, Picnic in the Park. And there was a special community climate action fair that was held this year, too. So we had tables at all of those and were able to meet and talk to people. In addition, we put, we were able to get an article into the Shoreline Area News about bronze birch boars. Problem for 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 light-colored birch trees. We're hoping to do more of that in terms of, there's articles on different kinds of topics that we've talked about. And it seems like a pretty easy thing to do. Two of our members, Victoria Kotas and Stacy Spain, have been working on updating information, brochures, I'm thinking about. We're really lucky. We have some great graphics design and implementation capability on our board. And so Victoria and Stacy have been working on updating and creating brochures that we've been able to use at some of those events. Those same two folks also volunteered to represent the Tree Board on the the Climate Policy Advisory Team. So they're attending that. Just another things, we did an Ivy Out demonstration earlier in the year. That was another thing that we did, and then we, a couple of us were active in planting trees on the southeast corner of the of the reservoir. There was, had been some trees there before, one of them had died. We planted two more. And we're able to publicize that a little bit. So then, just looking ahead, there's some overlap. Some of these things continue into our work plan for the new year, and this is something that I think you have in your notes. So I'm just looking at the first page of the Tree Board work plan, and I'm looking at by that first, the the second activity, host the annual Arbor Day activity, such as tree planting. Well, in this case, it's that event that we started to talk about a minute ago with the art. It's an, we've seen it as an, it's an Arbor Day event. And what we plan to do is to have a tree walk with Richard Dick Olmstead will be leading a tree walk around Horizon View Park, talking about the various kinds of trees that are there that might be of interest. But in addition, the Secret Garden Tour people would like to use that time to to give a preview, I think, of some of of an art installation that they've been working on. You know that that Secret Garden Tour, its purpose of which is to raise money for art, public art in the city of Lake Forest Park, and they're I don't know, at least, I can think of two examples, but the one we know the most is the Silver Columns on the walkway out here by City Hall. So I think that's going to be kind of neat event. They'll be previewing that with the, I guess, is a a plan for an art installation, a sculptor, a sculpt, sculpture that's that's gone along. It's moving along in terms of the process of being implemented. So if I, and I didn't, I didn't have any, I didn't talk to the the Parks people, but if you want to collaborate in some way on that, too, I think that would, we should, we should certainly do that. It sounds like you're already doing that or planning on it, so. Just moving down that first page, then, I just want to highlight a couple of these. There's one that's called Update and Publicize Tree Walks. Fifteen years ago, you've all seen the the paper, the booklet that has the tree walks that David Hep pulled together, and it was great. Been used a lot. One of our members, Dick Olmstead, has been working to put those tree walks onto the city website. So you can access them on your phone and walk around that way and look at it. And I think three of the four are done now, and he continues to work on it. As in terms of outreach to the public, that's something that we'll be wanting to to publicize more because people really enjoy that kind of thing, and it's it's educational. I'm turning on the next page, and there's the top of that list is a one, General Invasive Plant Management. When we did the Ivy Out program last year, we also tried to make a video of it. And for one reason or another, we got a pretty lousy video out of it, and we're going to try and do it, we're going to try and do it again, just to stage that kind of event to create a to create what we think would be a good video to have accessible off of the city's website, how to remove Ivy. People like to know. There's a part, and the next item on that list is the southeast corner of Five Acre Woods. It's a part of the Five Acre Woods that's got some more of a tree infestation, invasive trees, rather than the ivy that we find throughout that park. This is a concentration of holly and, I think, black locust, maybe some other trees that are are not desirable. So anyway, well, some of our members are interested in working with the Stewardship Foundation on a kind of concerted effort on that corner of Five Acre Woods. So we'll be, we'll be working to develop that. And then because of the nature of it, there may be more resources required to do that. It's not just pulling out Ivy. It's good, there're going to be some some tree removal. So it will involve a little more mobilizing of resources. But just jumping down to accessory assess results, I really just want to say that there were those two things that I mentioned. We're hoping to bring before the council at some point before too long, when it you can advise us on how we go about doing that, but the one being the exceptional tree list revisions and the other being the the overall general tree list that I mentioned. And then just finally, oh, no, no, underneath that has to do with the Community Forest Management Plan, which I think I've mentioned to you at some couple of times in the past. We we see ourselves taking that on, at least at least doing an initial analysis of what it needs to be done to it and whether we have the capability to carry that out or how the city might pursue it. It is one of our basic documents in Lake Forest Park. And it gets referenced in the comp plan and other places, and it really would be good to have it be updated. When it was originally written, it was part report of the work that the Urban Forest Tree Task Force had done at that time, 15, 15 years ago. It was part report and it was part policy statement. So it can certainly be cleaned up. It doesn't need to be a report anymore, and we can work on the policy. And then just, well, excuse me, the very last item on that page, work with the Climate Policy Advisory Team to have input from a tree perspective into the climate element of the comprehensive plan. It'll be another one of our key activities in the next year. So that's what I have. Happy to hear any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mark. Really appreciate the update. Yes, please.
I appreciate your work on all of the tree issues and especially about creating instructional things for people. Have you thought of anything about knotweed? And how to combat that? Because I know that we have a lot of it on the east side of 522 down all over the roadways, and it's really taking off, and it's down Burt Gilman Trail now.
Yeah, and it tends to like waterways and provides really unnatural habitat for, you know, streamside environments. Well, we've certainly thought of it. We don't have a plan for it now. It would, it would be good to be able to do those kinds of things. And it would be highly on the list. It would be important.
Yeah, I don't think people know how to get rid of it.
Yeah, well, for a long time, it was, and it may still be the case, the the preferred method was to inject it with a poison, not unlike Roundup, variation of Roundup, but to a very controlled way, inject it with a very mean-looking tool. That takes a kind of a training session to be able to administer. I'm I'm sure there are other ways that maybe are longer term and not as effective as that, but it is a harder plant to remove. You may know the root structure is like blackberries.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just on point, we've had to receive two grants to do mitigation regarding removal of knotweed on Mackler Creek. It's been ongoing for, gosh, two and a half years, I think, now. So one of the recent, I believe it was last fall, late summer, that they did an additional. This is under the guidance of the county and contractors that are really experienced in the application of that herbicide that you mentioned.
And I think they're looking more broadly than just knotweed, aren't they? Other?
I think so, too. Yeah. So colleagues, other questions for Mr. Phillips? Yeah, because we're riddle.
Just another thank you for your continued civic service and for a very succinct work plan. I appreciate your presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any other comments? Thank you very much, Mark. Really appreciate all you, all the work you and your team do. All right, we're moving on to the Climate Action Committee, I believe. Sarah Phillips is next. Welcome. Philip shuffle here.
We're pretending we don't know each other.
Yeah.
Can you, yeah, I am. My name's Sarah Phillips. I'm the Chair of the Climate Action Committee. We've had a very stable committee, except for our students who went and graduated. Although they've come back and told us we should be doing more. We're in anticipation of a question. We have yet one more opportunity to get into the schools. Sometimes I feel like they're, it's Fortress Shorcrest, but we have another, we've gotten another way in through some active parents to try and recruit some more students. But I did want to just say that I just wanted, we've had a great deal of fun on the Climate Action Committee. You know, it's sort of, there's a sense of urgency and and we have four members who are university professors who are getting, experiencing some of the issues directly of the current political environment. So I just want to say, I want to go back and talk about what we surveyed people, and the key findings of those surveys were just that Lake Forest Park should partnership with, partner with other jurisdictions, that we should continue to work to inform our citizens about what these issues are, that we should reduce the number of cars, that would be the basic reduction, emissions reduction. We should figure out how we get people into buses and bikes and walking paths. We want to educate our 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 residents. and bikes and walking paths. We want to educate our, our, um, our residents. Oh, I mean, that's what our residents wanted. They wanted, um, uh, what were the rebates and what was available to them and that we wanted to, um, empower our residents to, uh, help themselves to become a more resilient community by building resilient housing and resilient yards and resilient neighborhoods. Um, and our next, our, our goals were, um, next one, I do that.
It sometimes works, Sarah, as you know. Keep patient.
Okay.
We might have to.
There we are. Did you do that? Or I did? Oh, you did. That's good. The Climate Action, um, the Climate Action Plan has three goals. They're the same goals we've had before. They're just, um, that what we want to do and what we think the city of Lake Forest Park needs to do is reduce emissions within Lake Forest Park. All, um, that we need to enhance the ecosystem health and carbon sequestration. And that, uh, we want to increase Lake Forest Park's resiliency and preparedness for climate change impacts. Um, there's no, it's, it's not any secret sauce. Um, I think when one form or another, this, these goals would show up in climate plans across the country and across the Northwest. But these are ours, I think ours, some of the ways that are sort of unique are our ecosystem and how we want to protect the trees and the water and, um, use our assets for carbon sequestration. Although my colleagues tell me that, that will not solve our problem, that we need to do all of the other things as well. So the next one is our accomplishments and what we've accomplished is this year was we completed the Climate Action Plan and we brought it to you and you, um, I think your term was that you accepted it. Um, and then we told you, you should do more things. We told you you should hire a climate manager, which was our primary, uh, recommendation in the, um, and, um, I think that you will find that we haven't, uh, moved off that and we will continue to lobby you to bring resources to the climate action. Um, in addition, last year, we sort of stirred, I, I was struck by, from these reports, um, sort of the fluidity of, um, sort of things that weave from place to place and we found that with the Climate Action Committee. We had a, you know, we just did sort of one of those standard, um, farmers markets and some kids came up to us. Oh, kids, uh, students, college students came up and said, you, you, you ought to do a book club and we'll come to it. So we, um, organized a book club, a climate book club. We've now read, um, probably twelve books. Um, and, um, they, and one of them, very first ones was another sort of thing that flew, got fluid was, uh, Octavia Butler. You know, as you all know, she lived here in Lake Forest Park the last, we think, ten years of her life. She was a climate, um, prophet. Um, she began to talk about what was happening in, um, in Lake Forest Park, and not in Forest Park, in the world. Um, and, uh, she's an important character in our city and in the issues around climate. And people said, well, we should talk about Octavia Butler. We should have an Octavia Butler Week. So we sort of got a group of together and the climate committee isn't, we like to say, we're not doing anything, but we're there and we're facilitating the meetings and local community people are coming together. That includes the museum and the arts council and, um, there're going to be some presentations on, uh, Octavia Butler, uh, from a Seattle University, uh, professor who's been working on it. Where we tried to get Lake Forest Park Reads to read, uh, like an Octavia Butler book, but they said no. They, I mean, well, so when the library commission comes, you should do. But we're going to do a couple of other things. We're taking a walk like other people, you know, it's a, one of the Trails Association has a walk, um, from down here up to, uh, uh, thirty-seventh. Um, we're trying to get you to make a plaque for us so we can put it in front of her house. Um, but those are sort of, um, uh, uh, sort of one of the pieces of, sort of things that happened. Then we're, we're trying to, there's another person who wants to do something called the Climate Action Block Leaders. That's sort of in, still in the planning stages, but, uh, we're trying to support her where it would be like, what can you do in your neighborhoods? Uh, she's a young woman, uh, who, so the first meeting is at the Volpine, um, sort of to get people together to look at. So what would it take to, you know, be a block association on climate? So everybody gets the same battery when, um, they buy a battery for when things go out. So if you're, you, you haven't gone out, you can bring your battery over to somebody who has a CPAT machine or needs oxygen. So that's one of the things we've been working, um, we did some collaboration with other cities and we continue to keep those connections, but mostly with Kenmore. Um, and, uh, but looking at other cities, we're doing with the Milwaukee, uh, Forest Project. We think is a demonstration of how we could reforest, do some reforestation in Lake Forest Park, particularly in the Waterways Two Thousand spaces. Um, and, um, we've worked with organizations and commissions. Um, so next, where we see ourselves going is continuing these potential partnership or opportunities that meets what our city citizens thought we ought to do and what we think we ought to do. We're going to work with Republic Services, um, and the city of Kenmore to do, I, I think it's going to be, so can I recycle this event where people bring their milk carton or their whatever? Because people seem perplexed and even though they have a brochure, it doesn't seem to, so, you know, I think it'll be the video of what happens to your recycling when it goes through. So they see what, you know, the, why, why you can't have little pieces of paper and metal works all this certain, we've all seen that video, surely. Um, so something like that, we, um, uh, we contacted the people who have, uh, there's something called a Lomi where you put your food waste in and it sort of dehydrates it. So they're going to, that's a giveaway. Oh, boy, that one's set sort of in May. Um, we're doing, we think that'll happen in Kenmore. Um, we're, uh, Kenmore has a solarizing Kenmore program and they've asked us to continue. They, they've done that once before. They vet, um, service providers and, um, it, it's a real systematics program for solarizing. It's more important in Kenmore than this for us for, uh, emissions reduction. But they did it, uh, last year. I don't know if it was last year or the year before, and twenty-two people from Lake Forest Park participated. Not all of them put a roof in, but the, the first thing that happened was a consultant came out and, you know, said, you have enough sun or you don't have enough sun and this is how much it would cost. And they did that initial. All of that was part of this program by these vetted consultants. And it, that's a model, we think, where we can bring resources in that sort of vet things and then people can use them. Um, we think, um, we're doing something called, um, Get Ready for Fire Season, um, where we're going to have, uh, physicians, again, and it's on May third, which is, who knew, wildfire prevention day. So we thought that would be a good day to have it. And the physician for social responsibility are going to come and talk about the health implications of both wildfires and urban fires. Um, the Shoreline Fire Department's going to talk and I reach out to NEMCO and haven't heard back from them, but I'm assuming they'll be there. And then maybe some collaborate, some people with booths, um, you know, how to build a little box of, um, filter to keep you safe during smoke. And, and we're looking at possible, uh, collaborations on weatherization, um, electrical, electric vehicle fare, um, public transportation awareness um, and these, uh, Octavia Butler events that are coming up. Um, next, the, um, the other is that we think there is this sort of multiplier effect, um, that happens. So how is it that we can um, not work as a single commission, but how do we spread, um, uh, 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 around so that we can collaborate? We think this tree walk is one, um, we're going to collaborate. And so now it's going to be parks and trees and, and climate and, um, art, looking at sort of those things together. And it's an opportunity, we think, to do public, public outreach and then to talk, talk with folks. Um, we also think that for, for participating in city events, all those things that go on, we see that as an opportunity to talk to, um, to citizens about what they're concerned about and provide public information on an ongoing basis. And, uh, the climate hub is, um, moving along. I mean, it's moving along slowly, but, um, we've gotten permission from, um, Relone Guyer to, uh, redo the wall. So we're going to, uh, do the primer after the Commons Breakfast. Um, we've got, uh, we've raised, um, enough money to, to, um, get it off the ground and get it started. There'll be, so we have two local artists, um, one in Kenmore, Stacy Admin, who did the mural on Saint Vincent, Saint Vincent's and, uh, Debbie Tomasino, who's the Red Sky Gallery, uh, owner. Um, and they're helping us create a mural, which is sort of be an outline. Uh, I mean, it's huge. It'll, it's a huge space. Um, and they'll do sort of a outline and then we're going to work with Urban Arts, um, so that, uh, everybody, so, and they, they have, um, insurance, that's the key. They have insurance and they also have, like, I, as I understand it, projectors where they take the picture that you want and they put it up on the wall and then they outline it and then they put numbers on it and it's a paint by numbers. And so we want to invite the community to come in and do that painting. And then in the middle, there'll be a place with, uh, curated spot with information um, that changes. So organizations can put things up. So it could be about Octavia Butler, it could be about, uh, what not to plant. Uh, so we'll have those sort of things. We have enough money in, in our budget for something called the youth thing. I don't know what it is, but we have five hundred dollars to youth something, you know, we'll give them a prize for doing something that's climate oriented or, um, the other piece of the climate hub is that we're looking to get a video, a big screen so that we can have, uh, information on it and videos that go on there as well. Um, and then finally, um, we think, so the next, next slide is that we think, um, that we want to continue to disseminate information through, about the Climate Action Plan through various formats. And we're thinking about doing increased numbers of articles in Shoreline area news, doing brochures and handouts. Uh, speaking, people have asked us to do speaking and we do that, um, use the climate hub to share the resources. And we have one member of our, our committee who's very interested in trying to, uh, collaborate with the Shoreline Schools on climate issues. Um, the, I, and I just have to say, um, that we have not moved off our position that the most important thing is that you, you hire a climate manager. That in this moment when resources are being pulled from the federal government on, particularly on climate, it's incumbent that, uh, the local government step up. It's not, we'll never get these four years back if we don't stand up now. And it will be so much harder in ten years or four years or two years to capture back and to begin to move where, it's not, we're not going to go back to where we were. We already need to build resilient communities. We already have climate impacts. I mean, what, last week, did y'all hear that thunder over here? That, those climate river, what do we call them? Atmospheric rivers and it's not, the climate has changed, the weather has changed because the climate has changed. And those are mitigations that we have to live with and we have to figure out our hearts, our infrastructure, both, uh, bicycle infrastructure, road infrastructures, culvert infrastructures and human infants, infants, infrastructure. Um, so just don't want you to think, we don't want you to hire a climate manager. We think that's an absolute priority. Um, and the tree board is a model of how that works. It started as a citizen group, just like the Climate Action Committee, and they lobbied for staff and they are, they're doing better work.
Hang on a second, Sarah. Colleagues, questions for Ms. Phillips? Vice Chair for Tony and then Councilwoman Goldman.
Hey, well, thank you, Ms. Phillips, for, um, a wonderful report. I appreciate the work that you and the committee are putting into this and, um, so many aspects of it, a touch on our lives. And one of the things I really want to highlight is that, um, with your collaboration with other cities, um, you're also working with Edmonds as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And so there's cross-country, no, Cas, Cas County, I should say, pollination of our ideas. And, um, Edmonds is interested in our committee because our committee is officially recognized by the city. Their committee is not and they're trying to gain recognition from their council. So, you know, in a sense, we're a model for how this is supposed to work. Um, one other thing I want to point out is that the, within the city, uh, collaboration between all the boards and commissions has been really heartening. I've never seen this before where members of boards attend other boards' meetings to try to get a sense of where they're heading with their plans so that they can start synergistically working off of existing work, which I think is amazing. It not only saves resources, but it also promotes community building. And so really commend you on basically encouraging that kind of behavior. I thought it was just going to end with CPAT, right? With the, uh, what is it? The Planning Action Team, but it's not. It's going to go beyond June, isn't it?
The.
Uh, all the collaborations between the boards.
Hopefully.
Absolutely. So thanks very much for keeping our feet to the fire on this.
And as you know, Councilmember for Tony is, are, are lay us on and we're very happy.
As we are as well. That's where we're golden.
Yes, um, yeah, thank you for you and your committee, all the work you're doing, um, and all the, um, engagement you have with the community. Uh, my question for you, um, do you foresee, I guess either through your group or possibly the Climate Act, the, um, CPAT? Um, are you considering recommending any, uh, new or amended, uh, municipal code that would help address climate change?
Oh, we have a list, yes. And we, one of the things we did was, was, we began to do this. I don't, I'm, I tell you the truth, I've lost track of it. But we did make a list of the kinds of things that we thought needed to be changed. Uh, I think we lost our place with it, but yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I look forward to getting your recommendations.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, other questions? Councilmember Riddle.
And again, thank you for your time and effort and that of the Climate Action Committee. Uh, it's funny, I see you everywhere and every event and it's good to see you out there. Um, so thank you very much for the time and effort you're putting into this. I think we're going to see some important fruit, fruit bared from all this effort.
Colleagues, any other questions for Sarah Phillips? Thank you so much, Sarah. Really appreciate all you do. Hey, thank you. And I want to echo the sentiments of Vice Chair for Tony, the synergistic nature of the boards and commissions right now is outstanding. And it's, uh, it's something that other cities really should emulate. Um, and thank you to everybody for doing that. We're moving on to the Planning Commission Work Plan. Director Hoffman. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. Um, start off with an apology. Um, in her, uh, more important role, Chair McCartney is at home, uh, helping with a sick husband and child. And I didn't have time to forward her email or craft something. Um, but I'm here, um, to, uh, give the annual report. The work plan is in the materials and I promised her I would stand here and say something smart.
Nothing yet less for you, Mark. Thank you.
Luckily, it's easy, uh, and, um, very apparent, um, to the council. Uh, twenty twenty-four was comprehensive plan. Uh, I think I got here January eighth. I believe the first meeting I attended of the commission was January ninth. And I think the first question I answered was, could we have more meetings? My answer was yes. And they immediately started with, uh, with the Deputy Mayor, uh, six special meetings in addition to the regular meetings. And a very busy year, which resulted in a comprehensive plan that meets the Growth Management Act adopted last December on time. So.
On time is a very critical point. Yes. Community note that despite the rumors out there, it was absolutely on time.
Absolutely. Um, and so it meets all those growth management, uh, aspects. And in the face of all the recent legislation, it was quite a challenge. It was a heavy lift for the commission. Uh, and they had very little time to recover. I think we skipped one meeting and then immediately sat down and said, now let's do middle housing development regulations. Let's go. So they've been doing that since. You could see the stress. Um, and they're still doing hard work. Our next meeting is March eleventh, but it was a really good year. Uh, and it will continue. We do have some vacancies. That's a challenge, um, but a heavy commitment. So the easy message tonight, uh, that I think she would like to convey is thanks to the council. The, all of that work resulted in amendments to every element in the comprehensive plan, whether it needed it or not. Uh, and so it met the, the mandates, um, at the, uh, state level, regional level and local level. So it's quite an accomplishment. And, uh, when it came to council, it was very well received. She, she and the commissioners have certainly heard many times thanks from this council, uh, and consideration for their hard work. So. So she would say, thanks for that. She would, in line of the previous comment, one of the first things we did was outreach. And we attended the Tree Board, Climate Action Committee, Parks Board, Stewardship Foundation, pretty much anyone that would listen, understand what we were doing and provide comments. And so that first half of the year was essentially that and was successful. Their work since then on middle housing is, is aiming towards. A draft ordinance or draft code amendments coming your way very soon. And that sort of describes or summarizes their work for the annual report. And I hope you don't have any questions, but if you do, I'm willing to make a try on her behalf.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Colleagues, questions for, for Mark? Councilmember Riddle?
Thank you, Director Hoffman. It's not so much as a question as just a, a comment. And recognizing, as you've heard from other council members this evening, about the dedication of the citizens who contribute their time and thought to these commissions and committees. And want to recognize that it's really a dedicated group of individuals that have spent a lot of time over this past year and continue. With really thoughtful discussions and terrific work products that they've presented to the council for consideration. And want to recognize that, boy, there was a lot of work last, last year. And I hope they still have it within them this year to continue. It, it is a big lift. And just want to acknowledge and thank all the work that they're doing and the leadership and guidance that comes from the city staff.
Appreciate. Councilmember Riddle?
And I, I do have to send my thanks on to the Planning Commission as well as of Planning Commissioner who did the last update. It is a rough ride and they did produce a really wonderful work product. And I look forward to what they are working on with the middle housing and the climate element. We have some more good things coming this year, thanks to them. So pass that along.
Well, thank you.
Colleagues, are there questions or comments for Director Hoffman? Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Really appreciate it. And many thanks to the Planning Commissions. The middle housing is, question is a really important one coming down the pike here. Not coming down the pike, it's, it is here. So after that, I hope there can be a few weeks off for everyone. It's, I know it's a huge lift and thank you for your leadership. Okay, making sure that I didn't miss anyone here. We've got all the, yes, lo and behold, we're at the consent calendar, calendar. I entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, it's adapted by unanimous, adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, everyone. And we are moving on to council action or discussion representatives for the Seashore Transportation. We just didn't.
No, I thought we just adopted the work plans. No?
Oh, oh, we do need to adopt the work plans. We don't have those as an action item. No, it's okay. That was consent, correct? I want to make sure we're not confused.
Okay, I'd like to move the adoption of the work plans for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Tree Boards, the Climate Action Committee and the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Deputy.
Second.
So we're moving seconded to adopt the annual work plans for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Tree Board, Climate Action Committee and the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any days. The ayes have it. Thank you, council. Thank you, Deputy Reboi. We should just routinely add that as an action item. So thank you. We've covered the consent calendar. And council discussion action, we're moving on to representative, representatives for the Seashore Transportation Forum. Is that, Councilmember Goldman?
Yes, so as a city, we get two representatives on the Seashore Transportation Forum. King County has three forums, Seashore in the Northwest, Skateboard in South King County. And then the Eastern Cities or Eastern Transportation Forum. Mayor French and I were the two representatives in 2024. I am the co-chair of Seashore along with Councilmember Evan Poby of Shoreline. I was under the mistaken impression that we were, it was a two-year term, but apparently it was only a one-year term. So technically I am co-chairing a committee that I'm not part of. So I'm asking for myself and if Mayor French is interested for us to both be reappointed to Seashore.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldman. I really appreciate, appreciate you bringing this to our attention because some of these things are not necessarily staggered or there's no rhyme or reason sometimes to the terms. So yeah, I'd entertain a motion and then we can have discussion.
I'd like to.
Oh, go ahead, please.
I'd like to move that Councilmember Goldman and Mayor French be appointed as representatives to the Seashore Transportation Forum.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to reappoint Councilmember Goldman and myself to the transportation, Seashore Transportation Forum. Is there any discussion, colleagues? Councilmember Riddle?
Just, this is for another year's appointment, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, this should be for 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Ferretani?
And I for one appreciate the updates that both of you give to the council about local and regional transportation issues. I think we're much better informed as a result of having this representation. And certainly having the chair sitting next to me is kind of an awesome thing. So really appreciate your work.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I would just say on point that Chair Goldman has done an outstanding job. And it's one of the few places regionally that we have equal representation with some of the 800-pound gorillas to our south. So I do appreciate the work that Councilmember Goldman and our predecessors have done. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any days. The ayes have it. Thank you, council members. Thank you very much, Councilmember Goldman. Okay, are there any other items of business?
Yes, I'd like to move to excuse Ellen Saunders from tonight's meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Councilmember Saunders from tonight's meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any days?
Nay.
Okay.
Aye.
I was almost going to go to unanimous consent there, but, but we can't, so, thank you. Let the record reflect, I believe that was five to one-ish.
One.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And then, yes, we also need to extend the term of Planning Commissioner David Quelleno, who has done an outstanding job in this, in this. On the Planning Commission and we thank him very much to be willing to continue on doing the good work that he's doing. Director Hoffman?
Thank you again, Mayor. I, I did not ask Mr. Clavino to come tonight. But I did want to express that he has fulfilled two terms and that requires a special finding. It's to the benefit of the city and it certainly is. He continues to participate on the Planning Commission with middle housing is a key part of that. But he's also the Chair of the Climate Policy Advisory Team for this year. So we're asking for that finding to be made and that the council appoint him for another year.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. And colleagues on point, this is not without precedent. This has happened a number of times, including during critical time in the town center. Code revisions, planning commissioner, Richard Saunders was willing to re-up, actually, I believe, one and a half times to help get the work across the line. And I apologize if I forget anyone else that did at the same time. But having community volunteers that are willing to stay the course and finish something is, is very heartwarming and very valuable to all of us in terms of the institutional memory. So, Vice Chair.
I just wanted. Yes, I just wanted to say that when I was liaison to the Planning Commission and now, as you all know, Councilmember Lebo is. I had occasion to work with David and, and hear his contributions and I strongly support this extension. And so I would like to move to extend the term of Planning Commissioner David Clavino. Sorry, sorry, David, if I mispronounced.
Mine was worse. I apologize to David and everyone else. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to extend the term of Planning Commissioner David Clavino.
Point of order. I just want to clarify, are we extending for one year or for three years?
Director Hoffman, I've.
A term, I assume.
It's.
12 months.
12 months.
Just 12 months to February 2026.
Okay, so the same turnover.
Yeah.
Time.
The, the CPAT is a temporary task force and will be through middle housing and will evaluate again as the year closes.
Thank you.
So I amend my motion to add the term of 12 months.
Friendly amendment, who was the seconder? Thank you, Councilmember Riddle. Okay. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Riddle?
I would just like to offer that I heartily support the recommendation to extend Planning Commissioner Clavino's term for an additional 12, 12 months. He's been a valued member of the commission and his comments and thoughtfulness are, are well received. And very appreciative of his dedication to that commission.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any other, yeah, Councilmember Riddle?
We've just been hearing a lot about all our citizen volunteers and resident volunteers and to know that he's willing to stay on after his term and continue. And to, to keep that institutional knowledge going and how critical that is to meeting our deadlines. I really want to thank Commissioner Clavino and all the other folks, but for stepping up again. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of extending the term of Councilmember Clavino? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any days. The ayes have it. Thank you. That's six zero. Okay, we're moving on to council. Let's start with council committee reports. We had a budget and finance meeting. Chair Lebo?
Yes, we did.
I know, it seems like a long time ago.
Yes, we did. It was a very good discussion. It had to do with, I believe it was the dashboard that we reviewed for this year end. And so one of the things that we have on our retreat calendar is to talk about the city finances. So I thought it was a very good preparatory discussion leading up to Saturday's retreat. And as always, very appreciative of the work that's done by the city staff with regard to our budgets and finances. So, thank you.
Thank you. Much to Chair. Colleagues, any other committee reports? Councilmember Riddle?
I would, I would just like to add one of the, one of the highlights of the budget and finance was looking at the dashboard and seeing how well our predictions in things like revenue. Came out to fruition and how close we were. And that really does go to our staff and Director Vaughn and how. Much effort they put into really trying to predict things properly so that the city doesn't run into budget issues. So really kudos to everyone over there for all the effort to get us to where we are.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, any council member reports? Individual? Let's put on the board here, make sure we're not missing something. Okay, thank you. I'll be very brief. I want to start by saying, first of all, welcome to Rebecca. And would you stand for just, just a moment? And so everybody, you probably, hopefully you've met everyone. Rebecca's just joined us a few weeks ago and once again, so if there's people out there watching this video that didn't see her before, welcome to the team. And I also want to say to, I'm sorry, Director of Public Works, thank you. Apologies, Rebecca. It's been, it's been an interesting week. So I also would like the whole senior team to stand up. Mike, Lindsey, Mark, I also would like our, our attorney and Phil to stand up. I, I, I don't think anyone recognizes, but I certainly have over the last couple of weeks, that this community. And this council has helped assemble a dream team of leadership for this community. I've worked with a number of, of city administrators. I've worked with a number of police chiefs. I've worked with a variety of planning directors, well, two planning directors. And with no disrespect to the people that have come before, this team is really capable, incredible things. And we've seen it over the last few weeks. And I'm really looking forward to where we're going as a community. Because in their capable hands, you all are going to have the opportunity to do some really amazing things. So I really want to thank them for the work they do. And we don't do that enough. So thank you. Sorry to put you all on the spot, but it's, it's one of those things where it became very apparent over the last couple of weeks. As things, we, we've had staffing challenges, we have vacancies. And each member of the leadership team has stepped into the void to pick up the slack when we've had those, those vacancies. They have supported their teams. They have continued to communicate with the community with dignity, respect and kindness. And I'm, this is going to be a really good year despite things that we can't control outside, outside our purview. So I thank you all for that. A couple of other things here, let's see. We had a Berkham and Trail meeting with, I think I maybe mentioned it at a previous meeting. I'm looking very forward to seeing what the county does with the improvements to the Berkham and Trail crossings in Lake Forest Park. Thank you very much to Administrator Hill for setting it up and Director Dickinson for participating as well as the chief. We're, had a very collaborative discussion with them about making improvements for safety, for pedestrian crossing and bike crossing, multimodal crossing. As well as making sure that sightlines are, are clear for the vehicles that are, that are with our, within our community. And I really look forward to the, the County Parks Department continuing to engage with Lake Forest Park on that. Because I think that was an exemplary, it was an example of how we can work together if we just sit down and spend an hour walking around and making things better. So I know that Sheraton Beach Club, Civic Club and other groups in the community have been asking for improvements. And county's really stepped up, so we thank them for that. Couple, let's see, what else we have? Oh, the last thing I would say is don't forget Third Place Commons Breakfast next week. Important, as I understand it is. And you can, you should be speaking to this, actually, since you're on the board.
I should have.
I, I understand it's almost oversubscribed, so.
Yes.
Record numbers.
Yes, so if you have, don't have a ticket and you want to go, you have to beg the executive directors.
I'm sure they'll.
But anyway, we're really looking forward to it. We're expecting to have record attendance back to pre-pandemic levels for the first year. So it's really important because it supports the commons and the events in the commons and the farmer's market. And I think so many people think that the commons and the farmer's market are supported by Third Place Books or by Merloam Geyer. And it's not true. It's a community nonprofit that has to raise all its own money. So look forward to seeing many of you there.
Thank you very much, Deputy Reboi. I would also add to a big thanks to the council for supporting these community groups during the budget process. As I indicated in my budget, I, I believe that the, the sense of community is even more essential right now. And it's the time to continue to make sure that we up the ante in terms of supporting our local partners in whatever we possibly can do. So one last thing I would say, if you have a moment, to take a look at. Some other cities are in challenging places. The City of Edmonds is, is in, is a very challenging place. I had the misfortune of watching the City of Edmonds State of the City. Message from the new mayor last, from last year, he's going to do another one here coming up in the coming weeks. And so I'm very fortunate that we have a very talented council and staff that's supporting our efforts to make sure that we stay on track and don't ever fall into. Into the places that some other communities, Everett, Edmonds, City of Seattle have fallen into. And very much looking forward to that community conversation with everybody. And many thanks to Lindsay for helping us with the financial projections and all the things that she does there. Last note, the traffic camera question came up at the committee, the whole, I will reiterate, reiterate it again. The numbers have fallen to a level that's still staying almost exactly the same where, as where it was last fall. So it is what it is and we'll get some numbers to you all in, in very short order about. The projections that are going to be for the O2 fund when it comes to investments in pedestrian and multimodal safety. So. Vice, saying Vice Chair, I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to, in addition to thanking our leadership team in the city administration, I do want to thank our council members. Because the same message that the mayor is presenting about city councils not working somewhat at odds with each other. And, and, you know, having a lot of contentious conversations and different factions and things. We, we don't have that and that doesn't mean that we agree on everything. That, that isn't exact, being collegialist does not mean. That, that isn't exact, being collegialist does not mean that you are always in the same place or have the same votes. But I really do want to, um, express my appreciation to my colleagues here. And as we go into our, uh, 2025 retreat, I think, uh, you know, just, I could say this on Saturday, but I'll say it today. Anyway, thank you all.
Yeah, well, thank you, uh, Deputy Reboi. I did get that correct this time. Uh, yeah, I would echo those sentiments. We are, we are very fortunate to have a very collegial environment and a, and very robust discussions. And, um, not to, you know, shadow any other councils or, or cities. It's just that you all work very hard and, and it shows. So we do thank you. It's easier for us to say it because it's a little earlier and we're not totally threadbare as of, as of yet. Um, Administrator Hill, do you have anything to highlight from your report?
I have a lot, please.
Okay. Well, as a reminder, the, the council retreat is this Saturday. Uh, it is at the, uh, fire station in Kenmore. And what's our start time again? Seven?
Nine.
Aye.
No.
Sorry, I made Kim gasp on that one.
Starts at seven.
Breakfast starts at seven, uh, and nine AM and, uh, uh, council leadership and, and Administrator Hill and the team have put together a very robust, uh, agenda. I'm looking forward to those discussions. Um.
And no one will take away the breakfast pastries after morning break. That was so.
Yeah, that's, that's a topic for another discussion.
Sorry, it's just some inside humor.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order, folks? Okay, here nothing? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody for coming. Wow.
You're always lighting up cooking tables on the Thursday. I know, you have.
There we are. We're way early.
It's good. I could, I thought that we might be early, but.